I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to thank you folks for attending. Future board meetings, January 11th, 2022, and that will also be our reorganization meeting. We'll have a board of finance meeting and a regular meeting and organizational. January 25th at 6:00 here and February 8th at 6:00 here. The only revision to the agenda we have is under the HR report, and so we'll move on to public recognition. A recommendation to approve a $135,504 donation from Brighter Futures Indiana. Build, Learn, Grow Stabilization Grant for Metro North Elementary Little North Preschool. Also have a recommendation to approve a $51,847 donation from Brighter Futures Indiana. Build, Grow, Learn, Build, Learn, Grow Stabilization Grant for Southwood Elementary Little North Preschool. And a recommendation to approve a $100 donation for Southwood Elementary Robotics Club from Jake and Donna Fickers. I believe that is the donations. I don't think I have to check with Mrs. Moore on this, so I'll motion to approve. I'm sorry. A motion and second to approve the donations, all in favor say aye. All right, so we'll move on to school recognition.
We'll do the other schools and then I'll turn it over to Mrs. Moore. And then after she does hers for Metro North, we will go ahead and go to our main event, which is the spotlight tonight. So I'll start out though with Southwood Junior Senior High School. This is from Mr. McDaniel, the Southwood Junior Senior High Community. Would like to recognize Jason Apprecic and Cole Weiner for making the Indiana Football Coaches Association Class 1A Junior All-Star Team. Way to go, guys. Also from Ms. Knee, band choir director at Southwood. Great job this weekend to Ethan Lockard and Dakota Wilson at the Ball State Honored Band Performance. Our two students worked the entire day with high schoolers from all around Indiana and did a wonderful job at the evening concert. Thank you to Ball State University School of Music faculty for hosting this educational event for our students. And another one from Southwood, the Southwood community would like to thank Mrs. Goman and the English Department for organizing a theatrical experience for our junior high students. Right in time for the holiday season, students were able to view a production of A Christmas Carol. What a great way to get into the holiday spirit. And finally, from Southwood, we would like to recognize Mrs. McGordrick for organizing the door. Holiday celebration staff members and students decorated doors throughout the building. Thank you, Mrs. McGordrick, staff and students for helping us to get to the holiday spirit. And for Northfield, I just got one that just came in, so it's not on my list here, but this is from Coach Rex Reimer. From a... Obviously, he's our coach of basketball at Northfield, so it's from, looks like an IHSA double A official. I just received it, so I haven't even read it yet, so hopefully I can read it. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to work for both of you. And I think that means that was the Peru, yes, that was the Peru-Northfield game. So both of you would be both coaches, Rex and Eric from Peru. This past Saturday evening, Aaron, Tyrone, and I had a great time. Both teams showed great sportsmanship and were very respectful to each other. I wish you both a safe and successful season and look forward to working for you again. Have a Merry Christmas, and that's from Justin Markle. And obviously, we know, we hear a lot of these, which is very, very good because we know how competitive people are. And sometimes our emotions get in the way, and so it's great to see that they were very respectful to each other. So we appreciate that. So moving on with other ones from Northfield. Thank you to Mr. Johnston and his choir students for putting on an excellent Christmas choir concert on Friday, December 3rd. Mrs. Johnson has been working hard in his first year at Northfield with our choir students, and we appreciate his work at Sharp Creek and Northfield. Also from Northfield, congratulations to the following NHS football players, Eli Crowe and Jacob Snyder. Eli made first-team junior all-state punter for Class 1A. Jacob Snyder made first-team linebacker for Class 1A, so congratulations on a great season. Also from Northfield, thanks to student council and K Club for working together to plan activities for students this week. So, or so before Christmas break, the two clubs worked great together to create a fun, safe, and festive environment during the holiday season. And this is from Northfield and Sharp Creek. Congratulations to Northfield District students that were in the Scholars of the Quarter for the Community Foundation Walrus County. The awards were given for academic skills, persistence, positive peer leadership, citizenship, and personal responsibility at school. Sharp Creek 4th grader Charlotte Harrington, Sharp Creek 5th grader Chase Ross, Northfield 7th grader Millie Higgins, and Northfield 8th grader Brayden Rice will all receive an award certificate, small prize, as well as a $25 in their early award scholarship funds. Also... Yes. Just had a new one just come in. That was Northfield, right? So Southwood and also Southwood Elementary, congratulations to the Southwood District students that were the Scholars of the Quarter for the Community Foundation Walrus County. The awards are given for academic skills, persistence, positive peer leadership, citizenship, and personal responsibility at school. So Southwood Elementary 4th grader Beth Holly How, 5th grader Harley Heiner, Southwood Elementary 6th grader Alex Getz, Southwood High School 7th grader Brooke Farr, and Southwood High School 8th grader Sophie Toppo will all receive an award certificate, small prize, as well as $25 in their early award scholarship funds. So I'm glad we have somebody, but I talked too fast and I need another drive now. So now, Mrs. Moore, it is your turn.
All right. So in November, we have nine Metro North artists featured at the Winter Banner Reception at the Honeywell Center, along with Mrs. Gray. And those artists were Liam Aiken, Mary Merrick, Eliza Water, Willow Foster, Brooklyn Leferny, Regan Stiff, Kendall Case, Isaac Davis, and Macy White Men. And then we have two banner winners for Metro North. Liam Aiken was the kindergarten winner across the county, and then Brooklyn Leferny was the Metro North banner winner. Their banners are hanging down around the Honeywell Center, so that's exciting. I just lost my phone.
No, now I'm gonna have to read them.
That's okay. On Friday night, we had our second robotics league for elementary at Southwood Elementary, and our Metro North team is now second graders, which is a whole new challenge and exciting. They have no fear when it comes to their driving. And it was their first time to participate in the league. The first week we went and we just watched because it's very overwhelming. And then they got to drive on Friday night. And one of our teams is ranked first in the league, and so we were pretty excited about that. But we showed up and they drove well and did great. And our team members are Riddick Beatrip, Grady Langer, Rich McKillop, Titus Dawes, Steph Lin King, Connor Crum, Millie McKillop, Fay Leffert, Caitlin Leferny, and Alardy Effitz. And I also want to mention Erica Tyson and Amy Schmidt. And I know there are others, I'm just not sure who they are that help organize or not. It's a huge undertaking, and they just are completely critical of their own work and reflective, and every time it's better and better, so they are greatly appreciated. In November, we had our Metro North family night, which is always a great event. We had over 200 students and their families come back for an evening just of fun activities and games. And of course, we have our book fair open, and our theme was, you know, all about our favorite books and our favorite characters and the staff dressed up, and it's just all fun and great to see our families in our building again, having a good time. And then lastly, before we go to our spotlight, I want to recognize our kindergarten team, and half of them are here. Every year is an annual tradition, and they didn't know that I was talking about this, so. Kindergarten ornament day is a huge annual tradition at Metro North. I know we decorate our Christmas tree in the Moore household, Preston drives out that shoebox, and it is full of ornaments that he made in kindergarten. And our gym is, how many ornaments, 12, 13? 12-ish, a dozen? They convert our gym overnight into like a little ornament Santa-making workshop. There is more glue and glitter and paint than you could ever imagine. And parent volunteers, and the kids just make their way around the gym making all of these ornaments. They've got a little check sheet that they wear, and it's just exciting to see, and it looks seamless. And it's because of the work it takes, like, and hours upon hours, probably weeks, like, start planning Halloween. They were looking at the Christmas tree for a meeting to see if there were any ornament ideas they could borrow for next year. So they do an amazing job, and it's just a box full of memories that each of us gets to take home and relive. So, thank you. And to your team.
And I'd just like to piggyback a little bit on the actual robotics. Friday night, there were 16 teams. I know we have older students that go different places too, 16 teams. It was nice to be back into person. And another thing that I had fun with, Mrs. Moore actually had a little bit of practice prior to the Friday evening event. And I watched them, and then they actually let me try it too, which is fun. But then when we went to Southwood, their very first competition, they did very, very well. I didn't see other ones, but the very first one was great. So Mrs. Moore is actually the coach of that robotics team, so that's why they're in first place right now. All right, well, this time, if I could have, and Mr. Gray, you will actually do the picture. Mrs. Moore, Mrs. Harrell, Mrs., I mean, Miss, yeah.
It's just the two of us.
Okay, just the two of us.
Yeah.
Yes, that is. I was working on my, this, so today, we have Mrs. Elsie is going to be our spotlight. And I will go ahead and let you, Mrs. Moore, share with the two people that actually recommended her, and then actually get a little bit for you. So this is great, so why don't you tell a little, well, it's all in the board.
I'm gonna read what they said and then add more.
Stop. I'll stop.
Becca Elsie is so deserving of the staff's spotlight. She goes above and beyond each and every day. Recently, she stepped outside of her comfort zone and took on a 12-week maternity leave in preschool, which is not an easy task by any means. And I will add that it was her third or fourth week of school. Yes, so right after Labor Day, so just getting started. To most people, that would be quite daunting, but Becca not only was willing to take on that new role, she excelled at it. I am so grateful to her for taking care of my class and giving me peace of mind, even though that meant she had to momentarily step away from her normal position, which I know she loves. She is not afraid to jump in and help where she is needed. Becca is nothing but compassionate, kind, and caring. Every new challenge she is presented with, she gives 110% and never complains about it. Becca is one of the most kind-hearted friends, coworkers, and teachers that I know, and she deserves all the recognition she can get, and that was from Mrs. Cassie Carroll, who was the teacher on maternity leave. And then Jessica Hawley wrote, "Kind, compassionate, willing to help in any way possible, and hardworking." These words describe Becca Elsie. Becca has a heart that only wants what is best for a child. Her heart shines not only in our building, but outside of our building as well. This is evident with all the ways she volunteers around our community. I feel blessed to work with such an amazing person. Becca is more than deserving of our staff's spotlight. So I would add, are you ready? Really? So everything you do, you do at a level that is beyond exceptional. And Becca does not like to take credit for her work. In fact, she likes to do that work and then slowly slip away at the look. I think the spotlight is not good on me. But your work is greatly recognized and very appreciative, very appreciative. And you touch more little lives than you will ever know. And just empowering people. And everything that she does, she does with great love and in a way that you would want your own children treated. I don't have to, and it's important. Diversity of the lower kids, and then you teach them. So the other thing that I will add, talk about stepping outside your comfort zone, is that Becca has... I'm not gonna share, so I guess you'll tell me tomorrow. Because of that preschool experience, she has decided to pursue finishing her degree in early childhood and is starting that in June. So that is a great name and a community, and they're great, passionate persons, and she'll be incredible.
All right, and a couple more things, thank you very much. So we'll say, so on the card says, "Congratulations, because you have dreamed big and worked hard, we figured you might like a soft place to rest. Thank you for doing what you do so well," staff spotlight, so you can see what's in there, something soft, so anyway. Thank you very much, and congratulations. There you have it, there we go. So why don't you get a picture with the two of them? Congratulations. And you may stay, or you may leave, so it's up to you. Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we will move to the public comment period, for the agenda items only. So, but you guys, if you have anything you'd like to say about our agenda or Facebook Live, I'm sure we're a little behind, but we'll give them a minute or so.
I can say I'm supportive of new business item number two. That's what.
Facebook's caught up, no count.
All right, moving on to consent agenda items, looking for approval of minutes from our last meeting on November 23rd. Motion and second to approve the minutes of our last meeting, November 23rd, all in favor, say aye. Moving on to financials, claims.
Claims are pretty typical. Next, payroll, you should see an increase because we did all the tag dollars that we received from the state. We passed those on to our teaching staff, so that will increase payroll a little bit on the next, December 15th. Yeah, next one, which is tomorrow.
Motion to approve claims, I don't have any questions.
Second.
Motion and second to approve claims, all in favor, say aye. Payroll.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was actually payroll.
I thought you were. Well, he's already addressed payroll, you wanna say it again?
No, that was good.
Motion to approve.
Similar to our payroll.
Second. Motion and second for payroll, all in favor, say aye. Now, why don't you talk about the financials.
End of the month balances from November, that just kind of gives you an idea of where we stand at the end of the month. The cash flow, then, that leads into those, gives you also the end of November with the December estimates there. So you can kind of see where we're anticipating to end. Not much is gonna be different, I don't believe, in the month of December that's not already on there. One thing that I will know tomorrow is we will have a reconciliation in our basic grant for our CTE and honors dollars. That will go into effect into there, so that could be a slight increase or decrease in the basic tuition support. We also had our December 1 count for special education. I don't think we have solid final numbers on what that will be, but that obviously will have an effect on basic grant, either positive or negative, depending on whether that was an increase or decrease in special ed students. That won't take effect until February's pay and basic tuition support. So what's up there is a very good estimate of what our end of the year will look like for 2021. And then I'll start working on 2022 here shortly. Operations, same thing there. Again, not much has changed, that's pretty status quo as we go across there. We do pay a lot of bills in December. We'll have a lot of our bigger payments with some of our debt service payments coming in the end of December. Those type of things, so nothing uncommon. One thing I wanted to highlight in there, Mike, and this kind of leads into one of our new business topics. If you scroll up, you can see at the very bottom there for November, a $57,000 revenue into operations. That is uncommon for us. That is our dollars that were received from our insurance company for the total of the activity bus that happened about a month ago or so. And so that money obviously will be used to replace and purchase a activity bus.
If you vote on that tonight.
If you vote on that tonight, so. But anyway, nothing's, nothing's out of the ordinary with that either.
Always good this time here, at least for me, to see that growth in the bottom line. In education, but. Have a lot to thank for. The CTE dollars, Chris, that's going to be increased, where the funding was increased a little bit, or you said you didn't know?
The funding is, the funding, I believe, was increased. It's the dollars that we receive mainly from students that attend Hartland, even though we do have some CTE courses that we offer within our own traditional schools. So that student count, based off of the program they're taking, will generate a certain amount of dollars and...
Dollar per student didn't necessarily go up, right?
No.
Okay.
So really, it's a matter of the number of students and what courses they take. Yeah, so that could increase or decrease, but we will now receive those new dollars for the new year, based off of those enrollments. That's all tied into our basic grant.
It's still all based on first semester also.
Yeah.
So any new students that come next, we don't, we don't acknowledge.
Which there is, they are doing a second count in the second semester, but it will not be tied to anything financially at this point in time. Kind of, especially, and especially it also does account in the spring as well, but it's not tied to anything financially at this point.
Historically, do we gain or lose, was it?
For which one?
The enrollment, that would be, I think.
For special ed?
Well, just in general, all of them.
The second count.
Second count.
Oh, the sec, second count, we're usually increased.
We increased.
And that's just based off of our traditional, that's just based off of our basic grant dollars, 81 dollars. Regardless.
Any other questions for Dr. Kumpf? All right, thank you. We'll move on to personnel. Under resignation, we have Kerry Haytrapp, Athletic Secretary, Southwood High School, and Chad Viger, custodian at Northfield High School. Under employment, you have Katie Harwood Cook at Southwood Elementary, Patsy Harwood Cook at Southwood High School, Madeline Daisy, her professional at Metro North Elementary, Tanya Boone, head track coach at Southwood High School, Steve Swinson, head baseball coach at Southwood High School, Kyle Aderman, 9th grade boys' basketball at Northfield High School, Heather Hayden, head track coach at Northfield High School, and Kyle France, head softball coach at Northfield High School. And then employee number 131 is under our leave from, and you can see the dates there, at the end of the year.
That is HR report.
Motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the HR is read, all in favor, say aye.
Hartland Career Center report. We'll have a meeting tomorrow, and he'll give you a better update on the team.
Okay.
Superintendent's report, Mr. Kay River. Yeah, I just want to say it's really kind of unbelievable that we are to this point already and finishing up this semester and actually being about 20, 21 months into a pandemic. And so, again, just want to thank all of our staff for the additional tasks and challenges that they have and we continue to have, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas as we take a little, little break. Not for all staff members, some staff members continue to work over the break, but a lot of our educational staff will have a couple of weeks to regenerate and be ready for January 3rd, I believe, 2022. So thanks to all the...
Curriculum report, Mr. Gray.
Well, let me tell you. We have wrapped up our I-Step testing, and for those who keep a track, this senior class is the last class that needs to take I-Step to graduate. And so I think as a district, we tested maybe 20 seniors who hadn't passed yet and needed it to graduate. We have another window coming up in February, which is good, because as we're recognizing staff, if you guys don't know the name Shirley Haynes, you need to put her on your Christmas tree. That lady is amazing. She collects all of our data and submits it to the state, and so that helps with the enrollment and all the things that Dr. Boone was talking about, but it also helps with my testing. And the Department of Education is full of bureaucracy, multiple steps to get to one little location, and they are trying to make everything be seamless now, and it's an automatic every-night pool, which sounds really good theoretically, but in actuality, they are months behind in reports and data. And so Shirley has done a great job of trying to help us get those kids to be tested because they have to be correct in their system before we can do ours. And so wrapping up I-Step, and we are preparing for our weaker tests in the spring. That's what we give our EL students, which right now is a district. We're at about nine EL students across the district. That's including the whites and bridge students. And so that is for, you know, students that are mostly Spanish-speaking from other countries that kind of moved in with their parents, and so we have to do that. I do have SAT data and PSAT data, they just released that, and so I'm compiling that. I hope to give that to you guys here shortly. We tested all of the seniors that wanted to test in the fall. Did you mention the academic honors grant fund?
Honors diploma is just students that have an honors diploma and we get money back as part of our basic grant.
And so we use some of those funds to help pay for those seniors to take the SAT who need it for either graduation or for college. And so we have their data. This year, we tested all sophomores, of course, and some juniors with PSAT. And we even moved it down to the 8th graders and 9th graders. And so we tested some groups of our 8th and 9th graders with the PSAT because the state released a grant to cover those costs. And so we did not force all of them to take that because it couldn't really fit all of their needs, but we did encourage some. I hope to have that data when we come back, probably later.
Moving on to new business, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund has a six-month requirement to do a review and recommendation to approve our reentry plan and basically prove that we're not gonna make any changes to that reentry plan.
Yes, and so really, this is just an ESSR requirement that every six months we'll bring this back. And obviously, public comment is also something that can happen, but it's already in our agenda, so we don't have to worry about that, but that's part of the requirement that there is public comment if anyone wishes. And that goes along with number four of our agenda, of course, and then, of course, at the very end, number, actually, throw number 10. So really, the recommendation is that we don't make any changes. The reentry plan was developed, you know, July 13th, and of course, there were some other changes. That was then done, approved on August 10th. So the recommendation, like you said, Mr. Daisy already, is to, there'll be no changes to the current plan and supplement.
It's just kind of refreshing, so, right? So that what our reentry was is our ongoing.
Correct.
I just wonder if they'd ever jump in there and say, "What you doing?" Something like that.
And every six months until, I'll have to look back now, but through 2023, I believe, because that's how our grant goes through, and we'll be doing this too, so. So there might be other changes, but, or changes, we'll look at recommendations for that.
So we need to move forward?
Yes, I will move here. Approve it. Approved it?
Oh, sorry.
Motion in second to approve the six, the reentry plan as originally, I guess, approved.
The two of them.
The two of, I think the last one was August, wasn't it?
Correct.
You know, as is from August. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Item number two.
And I'll just say.
A loss for dramatic effect.
I like that.
The recommendation to approve the resolution of the Wabash County approving action and taken by the City of Wabash, redevelopment commission to establish a residential housing development program.
All motion to approve that resolution.
I'll second.
Motion in second to approve the resolution for the residential housing program, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Recommendation to approve the year of, the end of year resolution. That's pretty standard, we normally do it.
Yeah, this is something that we typically do. All it does is, since we don't have another meeting to the end of the year, it just allows us to balance out and close 2021, make the needed adjustments that we would need to make and any appropriations to balance that out. So that's all it really is. I did, we did get our 1082 notice just last week for our budget order for 2022. We'll talk more about that at the next board meeting, but there were, there was one change in our rainy day fund, and so it didn't really have any impact on what we did in our budget hearings, so that was good.
Move to accept the end of the year resolution.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the end of year resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Recommendation to approve the purchase of a new activity bus.
Yes, so I gave you all of the comparables and the different quotes that we got. Activity, there's not many buses around, and the ones that are being made are taking a long time. We actually ran into a little bit of luck, because this bus was actually starting to be built by another school corporation that wanted it, but then backed out of it. And so they do have one that they are still working on, which we hopefully will get in the next month or so. But just making a recommendation, replace the bus that was totaled a month ago. We did receive our insurance check from Liberty Mutual to cover the cost of that bus purchase.
The only problem is it's purple.
Let's say it in a professional school. Chris, the thing to wrap that back in line with, I mean, because you're ultimately close to your insurance, so the deduct on the seats. I'm just going from memory, I think it's like a $10,000 deduct.
Oh, on insurance.
No, on a new purchase. So I just wondered.
So.
Plus, it was wrapped up more quality seats, or these are bench seats in this one there.
They're same.
Same.
Yeah.
It's good to know that.
Yeah, everything is the same. The extra, little extra cost is just the decal stuff that we typically do on our activity buses.
Yeah, that's amazing, you came in line that close.
Yeah, well, they.
It's newer too.
Yeah. And they do their reason. We tell them where we buy buses from. So when they go to see what the actual cost of the bus is, they contact them to see what the typical cost of the bus would be, so that's how they get so close to their comparable with that.
It's the replacement cost.
Yeah, yeah. That's what the insurance covers. Anything under 10 years, a bus under 10 years, that is fully personal cost.
And that's the tops.
Yes, that's the bus.
Right, the tops.
Yes.
I'm always clearly, I know we have pretty purchasing of the bus.
Second.
Motion second to approve the bus replacement, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Recommendation to approve an overnight extended out-of-state trip for Northfield eighth grade to Washington DC on March 24th to the 27th, and it's coming spring.
Second.
Motion second to approve the trip for the Northfield eighth graders, all in favor, say aye. Recommendation to approve an overnight extended out-of-state field trip for Southwood Wrestling Team to Danville, Illinois, December 29th and 30th of this year, it's the 10th annual men's challenge tournament. Motion second to approve the trip for Southwood Wrestling Team, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have no unfinished business or board policy, any public comment on anything?
There is one.
Okay.
They wished me happy birthday.
When is your birthday?
My birthday.
Happy birthday.
I'm partying with you guys.
Did you text him to say that? Been making fun of him. I'm like, you've got nothing better to do than watch our board.
They're trying to be supportive, since you have to be.
I actually encourage them to make other comments that they aren't making, so I'll save those for.
Do we have any items for board members?
The eighth grade trip that we just approved, I'm sure.
No taxi bags. No taxi bags.
No. Well, I'm always concerned about the kid that might not be able to afford that, and I'm sure there's going to be a financial cost, somebody's in the loop trying to, because it's a wonderful opportunity, I'd like to see every eighth, ninth grader be able to.
Yeah, I think once they have those concerns, then they look at other ways to be able to make that happen, so.
Yeah. Yes, the average $25, $25. Is that what it is? Maybe $27.
Yeah, $370.
Yeah, $375. Yeah, I don't want to jump in and start undriving it, it might get abused, but yeah, I'd just like to see it, there we go, a part of the financial consideration.
Okay, we have nothing else, we're adjourned.